June County City Council will be not cover six things 2025 and now call the order. HK, would you like to be there please?
Father, it's such a beautiful day, it's beautiful weather, you give it to us and we thank you for the privilege of getting here again this evening to do the business of our city which we love so much. We thank you for your full guidance as we live in the future, thank you to those persons who sacrifice their time and talent in order to make this city work. Even though it's meeting, may all of us send it up in your will, in Jesus' name.
Our representatives, people of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I assume everyone's had a chance to look over the minutes from our last meeting. If so, then I mean, motion for those minutes please.
Oh, good night.
Motion to come in in just a second. Second, I am all in favor. Any opposed? First thing we want to do tonight is, I'm sure everybody's aware that the Jeep fest went off in a great way and lots of people, a big crowd. I've heard nothing, it's absolutely all good stuff about it. Everybody's just talking about what a great event it was. We actually, I would say that it broke off and everybody that came through there to get the card and stuff was just really tickled everywhere they'd been. Maybe some the whole event, they talked about how well everything is organized. So I think everybody enjoyed it, it was a great event and just glad that it went since it did. So we want to thank everybody involved. It took a lot of work, took a lot of planning and it began really quick because it was, what, maybe two months? That was quite the time that we had brought that people together, so great job by everybody. And saying that, we have Kim Dale here tonight with the WJRS Food for the Needies and that's where our donation is going to. So we would like to, Kim, if you will, and Jeep club and come in, very, uh, correct me.
Hey, I thought you were pitching a look good, man.
Angel, if you want to tell everybody too, or how much that the check is and what we're giving to the...
The grand total, we had given him the cash the day of and we're giving him the check for the electronic payments that we accepted and then all of the other payments that we accepted that day. So everything has cleared, our bank and everything, so the grand total is four thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. We are very pleased, very happy with this amount. It's the biggest amount that we've ever raised. Of course, we had multiple events that day to raise this amount of money, so it should be the biggest amount that we've ever raised. But we are very, very happy and the check that we're giving today is two thousand and three dollars to the WJRS food drive.
Alright, thank you all. Thank you all, thank you guys, appreciate it. So a good donation, we're just glad that anybody, you know, putting in time, telling how you save, probably been, been getting the rest of the work and work and work on it and, um, so, uh, I'd like to say for the kids, uh, can't, so. There we try to do what we can to make it.
You know, all the chicks wants and the mayor gets real job. She gets to take her real job all day.
I like to eat.
Whoa, wait, Rock House Blood. Me and Chris, Rock House Blood.
And we draw straws, I think, definitely, I think we're strong as the law is.
It wasn't on growing strong. That's just where we were coping.
But anyway, it was a good turnout and we're just glad that, uh...
It was really great and I think it turned out really well, especially for a part of here.
Yeah, and like I say, I've heard lots of people talking about it in Facebook, you know, when you, when you get on Facebook, you think prepared for the positive thing that is because you never know what's gonna happen. But everything I've seen on there has been positive and different people stopped and talked about what a good event it was and how well it went off and that they just, people turned out, they had people here from Illinois, I think it was the, the fathers away. So we had people coming in from out of town and...
Forty miles north of Chicago.
Yeah, forty miles north of Chicago, that's where they came from. And there was a pretty good group of them, I think there was probably eight or ten of them.
Yeah, that's some of the, some of the groups that he's in.
He had a big, you know, that...
He mattered, yeah. But there were some beautiful Jeeps, I mean, beautiful.
Oh my, yeah, some of them was like, uh, they, they were, and they just sent the pictures on them and they liked them and they did a parade in Jamestown and got the picture and turned it down. So the weather was great, couldn't be any better, so, anyway...
Let me announce the winners here for media. First place, and this is the poker round, first place Andrew Pearson from Russell Springs, sponsored by Jamestown Auto Sales. Second place was Scott Ellis, I think he's also Russell County. Super Lux Batters, Randy Hart, Superior Batters sponsored that one. And then third place was Amy Wilson, and that was two hundred and fifty dollars sponsored by Canyon Blair.
She's from Russell County.
Then the worst hand, we're ten ago. Worst hand was Kim Dale, a hundred dollars sponsored by Prince Valley Farms. And I heard that was a pretty tough hand to decide.
It was because we had to go down, eight high was the...
Eight high, we had to go down to three numbers to get the winner.
Get the winner, because there was, what, four people that was eight high?
Eight high, yeah.
And I've just now figured out why Kim had missed his money because it was for last place, he didn't want to make a dollar. So he never asked about it.
But all for money, one issue from Russell County.
They were.
Yeah, OBSN, then we gave twenty-five dollars to the people who traveled farthest and that was Sam E C C O S, I guess, from North Aurora, Illinois, that four hundred and fifty miles to came down.
Good turnout, just appreciate everybody's work on that and putting it together.
Be bigger better next year, bigger better, we use that term now.
Okay, um, new business, uh, tonight we have the second reading, uh, ordinance 2025 dash zero zero six, the ad, the boring tax HK. And this will be the second reading, so we will have to do a photo this night.
It's, uh, powers asking to read this. Ordinance 2025 oh oh six, and all of the, and the, uh, city of Jamestown, the general, the person, here's the 2025, 2026, and all tax to property in the tax jurisdiction of Jamestown, Kentucky. Whereas it's necessary, Jamestown, Kentucky, with those annual taxes on real property, first across the purpose of providing revenue necessary for the foreign operation of the government of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky. Whereas the city council, the city of Jamestown, Kentucky, is required by state law to establish a tax rate and other guidance regarding paying the taxes. Now, therefore, we are a name of the city council of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky, as follows, section one, for the purpose of supporting the operation of the government of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky, paying the bills and expenses included in current of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky for fiscal year 2025, 2026, or shall be. Hereby is elected and voted at oral tax, each one hundred dollars of assessed taxable property within the tax jurisdiction of the city of Jamestown as follows. A, real property, including real cash, insurance companies, should tax at thirteen point five cents per one hundred dollars assessed value, as determined by the department of the assessed value valuation. B, personal property, including personal property of public service, shall be taxed at thirteen point five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, determined by the department of the assessed valuation. C, national institutions, measured deposits of institutions located in the near section of the city of Jamestown, should be taxed twenty-five thousand, uh, one percent, I'll read it out, point zero two five percent for deposits per, and it's one thirty-six point five seven five, so section two. Section two, all taxes paid on reported December thirty-one, twenty-two, shall receive a discount of two percent on the total based value of tax bill. All taxes paid after January thirty-one, twenty-two, six, one per penalty, ten cents, ten percent, in addition to the tax paid. Section three, all persons or firms owing in 2025 property taxes which are required to publish a local newspaper as to link the taxes for fiscal year twenty-two, five, six, shall pen addition to tax owed and a ten percent penalty and additional three dollars to cover the cost of newspaper publication. Section four, this ordinance showed an effective clause passage and publication is required in law. Adopted city of Jamestown, Kentucky, is blanked, 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 twenty-five, first reading, the date of that, separate reading, it's coded today, the date of publication, signed, will be signed, Regina Hinton, Mayor, title of the town, City Hall.
So this, of course, is the second reading and this is just passing the, uh, tax and it did go down a little bit, so this is just a second reading to the damage effects. So I need a motion. Motion, do I?
Second.
Second, I agree, all in favor. Any opposed? So that takes care of that for another year. Second thing we have is the second reading of the ordinance 2025 dash zero zero seven, and this is the ATV's on City Streets. And again, this is the second reading, we had the first reading last month, so this will be the second reading, which will require some, uh, votes at the end.
And I regret it, it's just exactly like the county, they shared more and reworked their ordinance. I heard the radio this morning that the city of Russell Springs adopted one base of the county, so it ought to be across the board with the same ordinance. This ordinance 2025 oh oh seven, ordinance for rating to streets, legal special purpose vehicles, whereas, and this is pretty smaller guys, 2025, acts chapter eighty-nine, here, I'll read it for you. Oh, bless your heart. Whereas, 2025, protect the act, chapter eighty-nine, here, and that is the act, the hang law on March twenty-six, twenty-two, five, allows for the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on certain highways within a couple of cities. Is allowed by ordinance of the local government, thus jurisdictional boundaries, I three highway is located, and, whereas the act becomes effective on Friday, June twenty-seventh, of twenty-twenty-five, whereas the city of Jamestown has determined that it is appropriate to allow the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on specified highways within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Jamestown according to the act and this ordinance. Now, therefore, we hereby are a name of the city of Jamestown, Russell County, Commonwealth of Kentucky, section one, definitions. The definition set forth in section one, subsection one of the 2025 Kentucky Acts, chapter eighty-nine, here, and that is the act, and this may be admitted in future when we think, generally, or adopt it and incorporate the references. And as if, set forward fully as you're in, section two, necessary highways, street legal special purpose vehicles shall be allowed, with the extent committed by the act on all highways that are located within the jurisdictional limits of Jamestown, Kentucky. Section three, exceptions, street legal special purpose vehicles shall not be allowed to operate, A, on any highway or portion thereof, if it is located within the jurisdictional limits of Jamestown unless allowed by this ordinance. B, on any highway or portion thereof that is controlled access system, including but not limited to interstate parkway. C, on any highway or portion thereof where the United States Department of Agriculture prohibits special purpose vehicles. Prohibitions, section four, street legal special purpose vehicles are prohibited in traveling distance greater than twenty miles on a highway displaying center line, pavement, markings. B, mini trucks shall not be operated with street legal special purpose vehicles on a highway headed towards, probably because of the federal highway program. Section four, effective date, so it should be effective on blank, before we open that. And received the first reading on the blank day, blank, twenty-five, was given a second reading, passed the city of Jamestown, Tuesday night, signed, Regina Hinton, Mayor, attest, title of the town, City Hall.
And just to, I remind everyone, I guess, I'm sure one of those to be discussed before the county has passed the ordinance to allow A P Vs to be, uh, on the county streets. So, uh, we had the first reading, none of it tonight, is there any discussion before we take a vote, you know, with the...
There's no time constraints, is there, for this, uh, any time, day or night?
You mean, uh, on night time, on night shifts, like?
That's a question about that.
That's reasonable, they, state party, have headlights, headlights, every day.
Yeah.
Whatever ground the, or motorcycle or anything else.
On the highways, there were certain exceptions or exemptions, I don't know, okay, I'm applying, so I counted twenty-seven because it's federal highway, I mean, is it?
Right, federal state highway.
I think it's only on interstate, such as parkways, such as, uh, so...
Interstate, interstate, I know.
Therefore, I checked, did you read any, too?
I don't know, why, I'm just, that's just like a video.
Yeah.
It's like a car.
I think that is, I talked to somebody about theirs, you know, two weeks ago, I guess it was, and one of the big old ups said, a lot of people are gonna think that this is an easy thing to do. They want to get their insurance for theirs, so they get their, get their license and registration done. The insurance for theirs was about over a thousand dollars a year. Just, um, very, on the side side. So, I mean, it's not like it's gonna be something that, everybody's gonna take over, they're all jumping, you, they got to run in there and get licensed.
Well, they have to go through all the special...
Suspensions, the sheriff's department, etc.
Anything else, plus they, uh, I think the county said they only had, well, the last I heard when Patty was on the radio, like, they had, they had, well, it's not, it's not very many, so, but, um...
If we make it law enforcement, I was gonna be a challenge for a while.
Yeah, I mean, it makes me, or to, that last way.
We're already running, I was, yeah, we're already running across people that, that just hear illegal, they know, like, all the hoops that have to be done through, we're already getting those...
I bet one more of one twenty seconds, really, let it, no, no.
Yeah.
And then being here with a motorcycle license plate, will you be able to write a license plate and see that it has valid insurance on it?
I would assume so, the plate, it's similar to it, but I think it is green, I think it is a green plate, so, and that was the thing, I had a question about the, uh, about the mini trucks. We, we started to see those too, the little mini farm trucks, they have their green plates too, so, and if I maybe misunderstood about that, I would leak those, but there's some of them that have, that got, uh...
And a little halving license plate because the state's, everything, yeah, says that they aren't allowed, but...
They're like the little cushions you're covering back.
They're like the little one that has the cereal over on the, they look foreign to me, I don't, I think they come from, I see a lot of farms, I've seen, we've seen those too, so...
Those aren't supposed to be allowed, those aren't supposed to be a part of what's being passed, it's the A D's, it's not, the trucks, not...
Anyway, I don't have a question, I'm excited.
I've got a motion, yeah.
Of course, we had, uh, we had one little, uh, city park, uh, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, with kids there, where it is, I know you've had trouble with them, you know, illegally, you know, and with, zoom, you know, down the wild park road, I opened with, uh... I called, I figured I'd call, but somebody's on duty, you can't make that there, there's no going, you know, uh, it's just, uh, it's just, it's gonna be a little man, I'm sure.
Kids driving or?
Uh, they always, I'm like, hey, you got a beard, you got, you got a poor beard, so, uh, one man. Just to make watch out for the, uh, the ones that, uh, abusing.
Well, uh, yeah, that's true, but at least there is regulations that help that, and I'm sure they've been being rowed anyway. I've seen them out on the road long before this even turned into a fact, so now you do have regulations, it says they've gotta have insurance, they've gotta have a license before, they were just outrunning, so, for me, at least now they have to be covered by some other restrictions. But, so, but I do have a motion, do I like to accept, passing?
Second.
And a second, I agree, all in favor? Any opposed?
I'm voting both, uh, although I, I, I don't want it to create a nightmare.
No, you're going, you're going right, it's, it's...
I don't want to create a nightmare, important nightmare, so yes, although yes.
I think we'll call the road on this, so, do I?
Uh, yes.
Hiddle?
Yeah.
County?
Yes.
Perry?
No.
Gail? Yes, we have a motion passes. Okay, that's, uh, so we'll get that signed off on, uh, and get that turned in, I guess, and then, and, and in another sense, I think, when the county passed it, my thoughts on it are, if the city didn't pass it, you're gonna have a lot bigger ordeal than what you've got with...
Too much charge to, you know, force that thing.
Because who knows, the people that's in here writing, who knows exactly if they're on the county or city road, or if they're right legal or if they're not. I just think it would have been, with the county passing it, I think it would have been a big ordeal if the city didn't pass it. Or for the police to deal with, with trying to figure out if they were on legal roads or if they weren't, and if they were supposed, and if the people even knew, if they were doing what they were supposed to do.
My vote, no, uh, there's different people talking, some, some wanted to pass, more didn't want to pass it than did, it told me, in my thinking, it's, it still has an off-road vehicle, that's, that's what it is, it's an off-road vehicle, and, uh, I don't, I asked everybody, but that's just what I'm thinking on it.
That's why everybody has to vote, everybody has an opinion.
The only reason I'm voting for it is just to avoid the, the confusion and enforcement nightmare created, uh, while enforcement and the confusion that it would cause for the citizens, not on the low, you know, which they probably do anyway. But, you know, they get stopped, get a ticket down here, well, I thought they passed that.
I understand the confusing, but that is...
So anyway, the motion has passed, so we'll get that in, and, uh, people now, will we allow to, with license and with inspections and everything else, be allowed to ride on the C streets, so? Okay, uh, that's the only thing that we have on our agenda tonight, but a few things I just want to talk about that's coming up. Um, we're gonna do movie night tomorrow night, we actually, uh, we had a flyer made up and I took those to the school yesterday and they handed those out because we're down too, it's October, you know, and we're not gonna really have time to do any movie nights because we've got Trucker Treat coming up, we've got Christmas on the Square coming up, it's getting ready to get cold. Maybe, is it Mike? Is it gonna be cold or is it gonna stay seventies?
Usually, what, November before it starts really doing anything now?
Last year, we, over the last two years, we about froze at house, so...
Is that when you...
Yes, so we're down to...
Weather Channel shows, uh, after Saturday, saying one, the high, like, next, eight days is gonna be...
In the sixties.
The amount of days is gonna be down to thirties and all of them down to forty.
So, yeah, we're down to, and, you know, you run into, it's hard in the summer to show movies because they'll be dark tonight. Yes, it is, somebody needs you, yeah, you know who it is. But anyway, so we are, and it's gonna be the nightmare before Christmas, it's the movie we're showing, and we'll have pizza and popcorn and water, so hopefully, well, the fogging is away, which is a good thing, of it's hard to compete when there's, uh, fogging, it's a long, you know, it, the fogging is away, so, maybe, maybe the weather's good, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout. Anyway, we're gonna plan on starting around six-thirty, if it don't get dark till quarter till seven, then it may be a quarter till seven, but...
It's pretty dark at six-thirty in there.
Okay, around six-thirty we get it started, and it is a Friday night, so it's, and not so bad, cause kids don't have to go to school next day, so, anyway, that's coming up tomorrow night. Uh, Trucker Treat, that's something else we need to talk about, uh, I think last year we did, of course, it's Friday, the thirty-first, we did five to eight, which I think you need three hours, just because people going to Russell Springs and Jamestown, I did hear Russell Springs times announced on the radio, it's five to seven. But I really feel that it, you almost think it's three hours for, because lots of times there's long lines and it takes them a long time to get through, and then we go to Jamestown and Russell Springs, and the weather's supposed to be good, and so I feel like we'll have a big turnout. So you all think it's okay to go and run five to eight like we did last year because we need to get that out on the radio, so five to eight, run for that. But then the kids will be coming through from Jamestown that day, they'll be, I believe it's, David, is it nine o'clock?
Yeah.
I think nine o'clock when they come through, so if anyone wants to come up and help give out candy or, uh, you know, they'll be coming in and then we'll have Trucker Treat that night. So we're gonna try to get it out there and try to, we, uh, get it on our city page, on the radio, try to get as many people set up as we can to give out candy. And then, uh, as soon as that's over, it's time for Christmas on the Square, that's the first Saturday in December, which will be December the sixth. We do already have the, the horse and the babies booked and the contract, had that paid for, all of that. Um, I think we talked a little bit about it, uh, we're adding ice skating this year, tourism centers, first fully donating to do the ice skating, and then we're, uh, just working on getting everything else set up and maybe try to add a few more things, um...
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna keep carting.
Oh, yeah, for Christmas on the Square, I mean, for Trucker Treat, I mean, that's a minute ago, do you want the car out of town or you want them to bring the cars? Let's have them bring them, because I think no more time than they have.
What time do you need to do that, that they have for two?
Probably they have to bring them, let's say, or they, they can, around five, they have a ton of time at seventeen, kind of long, so, that's, I think, that we're going to have.
That way you can have them on display while...
Well, we can, but, you know, like I say, you hate to cut people off that early if they're at Russell Springs or something, that car, you know, uh, if it's back before they're gone.
Display.
Yeah, that's what we did last year, I see.
Twenty-four, five, you leave them on display while that you're doing Trucker Treat.
Yeah, of course, you're gonna be pushing people getting home from school and getting back out here at five or five.
What do you have a judge?
I'll say war judge.
Judge Zed, but I was gonna put it out, try to get him here, so you can.
Yeah, you're so saying, yeah, but that'll be judged at seven, that sound good, that way we'll try to get them on the square. And then we, uh, got to get with Yvonne, we'll see about the kids, if they're doing Christmas on the square. And, uh, Santa Claus, I talked to him back a little earlier, he's, uh, committed to be in here, so. Anything that you all can think of that we need to add, um, it's time to come back on, uh, those this year to, you know, to really take care of the admin, to get it on.
Why don't we start out guys about the, the regular houses and stuff?
Yeah, that's when we need to start doing that too, because we usually try to get them plenty in, um.
So it'll be on Friday or Saturday this year?
Uh, Christmas on the square is Saturday, it'll be the first Saturday. It used to be on Friday, but they changed that because of people parking in town instead of the businesses. So, courthouse being open on Friday. But they kind of changed that a couple years ago.
You know, we're not, we still need to work on some music around town.
I talked to us a little bit about that, uh, at least, uh, using the whole time that it's going on. You know, up until time, in the life of the tree. I think too, Debbie, we need to try to order some of the candles for the, for the new silent night. Around the tree, yeah, we need to get some of those ordered.
Mike, is there any way, you're the music man and the speaker man, I'll listen. Is there any way of going, blue tooth around, multiple places around town, this picture? That's what I'm expecting.
Yeah, yeah, we could, I, I could talk to Tommy, because that's what, that's what Russell Springs has, uh.
Really?
Blue tooth, yeah.
Yeah, I heard there's a little thing, I was in there on the stove, which, uh.
That they actually ran it off, they, they ran it off.
Yeah, yeah, they, they've got it all over now with that. I don't know how, I, I've never really paid any attention, is it loud enough, have, whenever, when I set up with the music, is it covering pretty good, because I, like I said, I'm, I'm just right there, I, I don't usually walk across or.
I think it's good, but I thought last year's a little bit low.
A little low?
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, we could, we could work something out.
Well, it is, it just, I thought, I didn't know, uh, you know, if that was something or not, you know.
Do you think it would be better if, if we set up somewhere else, because, you know, last year's.
That was my thought, would it be better?
Courthouse, and, uh, and then all, all the time before is where Santa used to be over. Of course, they moved Santa because the music was too loud.
It says that we. Where, what about, um?
Right on the line.
Yeah, why don't you sit right up on the square, I mean, you're on the, where the double way is.
Yeah, we, we could just, like, put the speakers in different spots, yeah, maybe that would help. Of course, it's good if you can be close to building, like, because in Russell Springs, if you've ever paid any attention with the Christmas parade, you bounce it off the buildings and you get more sound. Of course, that was before they started running all their own speakers and stuff.
Where do you think's the best area for you to be?
Just as long as I'm away from the Santa Claus, I should be.
You're trying to build space on this, I don't know. And then put the speakers face around.
Yeah, 'cause it, I, I think, I wonder if we were over here on, like, going down East Cumberland, where those buildings are with the dentist and all that is, would that, do you think that would be able to?
That might help, cause you really have your horse and stuff over here by the bank. So maybe if he's on the opposite side.
That might help a lot.
What do you think?
Of course, I could set it up and try it, if, you know, before then.
You could set up Halloween Trucker Treat and play Halloween. Just a thought.
I had, I had done that for Russell Springs before, um, but yeah, I don't, I don't think they do it anymore.
Still may, but you set up on the spot.
Yeah. I, I could, I could probably hook you up.
Like free on Halloween?
I, I think so, because I got a wedding the day after, the first of November, but I think Halloween's good.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Okay, all right, we just, uh, Mike's. And you, yeah, and you tested out, we got this for Christmas.
And you got all those little pop-up canopy suit, we don't want you to quickly get wet.
We've got one.
Do we, okay.
Yeah, we got, yeah, again, Christmas. You have to wear an elf suit. We've got to be some.
Be like elf with, uh, what's his face, Will? Yeah, I could do that.
So, um, any other thing, anybody?
I don't have any there.
Okay, okay, for Christmas.
You are, I'm sorry, we filled out Christmas, and I just couldn't talk about law.
Oh, just, yeah, just if there anybody, anything else that anybody can think of, right off, or if you can make a something between, sometime soon that we can add, that we're gonna get, walk vendors, we can, we're gonna try to have hot chocolate and stuff like that set up, but, um, and I think the skating's gonna be four to eight, so. But if you have any ideas or anything, that's pretty much all that I had on that, so.
Thank you. Michael Maughlin has sued everybody from the governor on down to the constables. And, uh, City of Jamestown has been joined, our honorable chief has been joined, I think, first time he's ever been sued. And I don't think y'all worry about it, but that's just my opinion. And also, our mayor has been sued.
Second time.
So, I guess what I wanted to accomplish, I, they, they have to be answered, I mean, as trivial as they may be, you know. They have to be answered. I don't know what he's asking for, I'm not sure, but we just have to say, we don't know, you know. We're denying, we're wrong, that's basically what he announced too. So I guess that's one, y'all's approval, I'm gonna do it anyway, it has to be done. So it would be Jeff, it would be the mayor, and it would be the city of Jamestown. Now, here's one thing, I don't think it's an insurance issue, but I just wonder if somebody ought to call our carrier and just say, we have this, and maybe send them. They can look at it and see that it's not anything.
Yeah, I heard it over and it's very.
Or if he doesn't understand, you let me know.
Well, I, I'm just trying to look at what they're, that's, I mean, it's very, very little.
Does he have a carrier?
No, he's pro-siding, he's, so, he's pro-siding. And he sued the governor, he sued a certain judge, he sued.
Turned it to.
Turned it in. It's, um, amazing. Well, I guess, I want to, this would be the answer in pursuit of, you know, I think that's what it is.
I guess Jeff had something you wanted to add.
I did reach out to the law enforcement, I had contacted City State, and he advised me to hit put their council notice, so I'm assuming that'll let you know, or, or, I told him this is the first time for me, I've never been named in one, so. But I don't, I don't understand what, what is complaining against us, other than there was a couple Facebook posts that was placed on there on the, the audio of the paperwork, and, but.
You know, we probably should have gone into the executive session, if you could leave that up there.
What?
Yeah, we should have gone into the executive session. I don't, no, I'm fine, I don't, it's totally transparent to you, but it is litigation.
Uh, oh, yeah.
Don't compromise, and journalists think that is.
Well. It's one of, it's one of my, uh, it's one of the things that, my selling points as far as getting sponsors, is it's gavel to gavel with no editing, no, you know, uh, no bias, no introducing anything.
It's just litigation, and I just, you know, and I just worked it out without thinking, and that's fine. I'm perfectly comfortable.
Well, I don't think he, like, you didn't cross the line there.
Problem, just let her, just let her. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
What's the Daxi doing?
First now, give her.
First of all. Has there been anything about the ones that haven't paid?
Well, they were posted in the paper. I don't know how.
I know.
Posted in the paper.
Now, when does the, the street ordinance going to affect? Just when it's published, when the publication's over with, that's when the driving will take place, right?
I would assume they.
That's what it says?
That's when it's going to affect, and then they have to get their license.
Gotcha, all right.
But, yeah, taxes will go out the first of July paper, um. The ones that aren't paid by April, I believe it is, is it April? They go in the papers, there's a penalty after, um, December if they're not paid and then by April they'll go in the paper and then getting not paid, then we can do liens on the properties.
So, but I have any thoughts that were way back?
They've just been in the paper. And, and the question is.
Before we file, can I ask?
No, you can file. We need to decide how far we want to go back, I guess, that's something that, you know, you had, maybe two years, three.
How far can you go back?
Five years, I believe.
I say go five years.
That's correct, that's. Uh, and here's what, the only thing you gotta think about if you go back five years, probably, I don't know what percent, but of the properties may not even still be owned. It's gonna have to be a lot of research to search properties that hasn't been taxed in five years to make sure they even still own the properties or not, if you try to go back that far. Now, I mean, I did, I think it's, you know, but, uh, then it is gonna be a lot of, it'll be work and a lot of time on doing that to go back that far, um.
What's good, what do you feel like for me now, top of nowhere?
Well, I feel like that we need to start now, I mean, you know.
Start enforcing it.
Start enforcing it and making sure that it's.
I just know for the list, the list, probably you run over several, but.
There is.
For some huge amounts.
There is several, there's some that goes back a long time. And like I say, you can go back.
Oh, I don't know, if they're still full, I'm sure, will this go on, I mean, it's not that hard for the deeds.
It's a lot of people, you go back five years, yeah, I mean. See, I mean, people's gonna be full, it's a lot, and make sure that they still own the property. I mean, you know, you've got, when you file a lien, you've got to make sure you file a lien on the right person. You can't go file a lien on somebody that owns a property out, you know.
A lot of that should be, that, after one and then another, will this, will this come on?
Right, yeah, yeah, you've just got a lot of people, I'm saying, you've got a lot of people that's got to be searched to do that, if you're gonna go back five years, you need that.
Well, if we, if we actually enforce what's like now, beginning now, we can even put it much easier, uh, with time.
Yeah, you can start, if, if you choose to do that, you can start this year and, and April, everybody that's not paid, you know at that point, unless they've sold the house, because when a property is sold, the deed does not, it may be sold in June, but that deed does not transfer until the following January, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Because it don't transfer until the first of the year. So, trying to do five years with as many people as there is, you, you've got a lot, a long time work there. If we can start and, and make sure in April, once that the time is out, that they're published in the paper, as soon as that time's up, then you pull the properties and you can place liens on the properties. That's my opinion, but that's whatever you all.
Sometime if you're running tired, it's easy to forget, there's the city new evidence, you know, if you don't pick it up and get it paid, then it stays a lien. Some very good lawyers have got caught doing that.
Because.
Just because they didn't know, I did love them so much, you know.
And just being in the banking world, uh, we're, well, real estate closed, you have title opinion, and there, as HK says, there's lots of times when the county taxes would show, but the city taxes would not show because they didn't realize they were in the city when they ran the title opinion. So you would have to call Russell Springs and Jamestown, see if they had city taxes or not, when you, because it's, it's just a, a lot more to it than, you know, knowing that somebody might have sold the house in the middle of the year and it got transferred until January, uh, maybe sold it in February, but still don't transfer until the following January. So you go all this research, even just on what you would have in the usual time, don't you think?
Yes, yes.
But I do think we do need to start enforcing when property taxes are paid. Because if you're charging people a penalty for paying them late, you for sure should get home with some kind of penalty for not paying them at all, you know, it's like people are getting not, better not paying them at all, the equal payment.
Pretty good, my mind.
Yes. So.
I'd like an equal back on par or anything, like, just, just set a precedent.
Whatever y'all think. How long do you want to go on?
Fifteen years is technically enforceable.
Is it fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
I say five, I'll go.
I thought it was five, that's what I was, I think they told us, five.
Well, fifteen actually, um, sometimes a lot longer than that.
Well, cause title links go for fifteen years also, and. Well, I, I think we need.
I'm sorry, uh, who's gonna have to do the digging here?
Well, I mean, you know, I'm not sure.
I mean, it's, it's in, in our office, I mean, who's gonna have to?
Well, Tyler is the one in charge of the property tax, correct Debbie? So he would be the ones that will have to tell us whose name goes in the paper. And then after April, whose name hasn't paid, then I don't think anybody in the city is certified to go look up and place liens on without somebody as HK being involved to know that it's done wrong. And it's, because we've got to make sure when we place a lien on somebody's property that it's correct.
Companies buy our tax liens, do you know, think about that, do they buy?
They have it.
They can do that, you know, take it away from.
I heard it.
They, uh, they have, they can get it, so.
Yes. Happens a lot, especially after.
Well, it's a pretty good deal, I mean.
Buy taxes?
Well, it's, I don't buy, but, uh, I mean, as long as it pays. Well, it's good, it's a good deal for the company.
The company can charge, uh, is it twelve percent plus any administration?
Plus twenty things, they can take a two hundred dollar tax, they'll turn it into two thousand dollars in no time. Every time a people at the phone say hello, so and so, that it.
Yeah.
Seriously, it's a, it's a rook, it's a racket.
I think it's limited to twelve percent interest, but any amount of administration fee that they want to charge, can be charged.
So that's where the money is really, those greedy owners.
So I think we would have to get down to, uh, once we got a list, uh, HK would be the one filing the liens, I think, wouldn't, because there's, then it's what, twenty-three dollars to do a five lien. I'm sorry, all present's list, if I have to, look at it, see if anyone has it, okay.
Well, I don't really know, I mean, they go back thirty years, you know, the property's transferred, we don't know, and.
A lot of them are really old, I mean, they go back thirty years, you know, the property's transferred, we don't know.
I think I can go back to oh, one, maybe.
And you've got a lot of persons buying property, not denying it's on the liens against it.
Because, like we said, lots of title.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
I'm not going to have.
A lot of bad, bad banks, probably.
In my opinion on that, is if it's transferred, then you. That was our mistake in our laws, if it's not transferred, then it's, well.
Well, that's what I'm saying, every person on there that's, you're gonna pull the deed. You're gonna have to go live deed.
A lot of those, those like thirty-seven.
If you're, if you're going back, you know, once this year, you assume that they still on it. And you're about to introduce name it's in, because it's still in the name. But after a year, after January the first, that deed will transfer. So at that point, if you go back two years and that deed's been transferred, it's our fault, we called the right person. So, but the first year, you're gonna be okay if you, because that two names is in when you, the taxes were due. That's why when you sell a property, you gotta make sure, just like I sell you a property in July, I'm still gonna get that tax bill first of the year. Now you have to make sure, that happens a lot, that it.
That's why you're.
Cause we don't realize.
When you go to closing, you say, okay, the tax bill's gonna be five hundred dollars.
Usually correct.
That's right, that's right. You tell the buyer, be sure to check with the sheriff.
I've always done, I've signed with contractors. Before the middle of the year, that the buyer might pay you all of it, but after the middle of the year, or the seventh day.
We usually do preparation, but you can tell them at closing that, make sure first of the year, that they have a supposed to do your deal, make sure you check on it, that they're good. And it's not by their fault, they just, the taxes will transfer, get transferred to their name. So, um, like, where do you all want it coming out? I know we can, this year, uh, as of April, after they're in the paper, they're not paid after that, we can run through liens, but what, everyone want to go back, pause it now, what?
Well, if it be a personal, they, 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 I don't know if it makes a difference or not. I, well, I need to start now, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think start this year, but not, in my, but, um.
It'd be a lot of work on somebody, and go back to lots.
Well, and you, you're taking a chance on.
And it pays for you.
Well, you know, I ain't saying, that's true, yeah.
That's what you gotta be careful about, right?
Costs more than we would do to collect.
Yeah, it's true.
And then too, you gotta realize too, even when you place a lien on somebody's property, the only time that's probably gonna come into effect is if they try to sell that house for refinancing. Cause you gotta get the lien off, you have to do it. They may say they were the lien on their house for ten years and not even know it.
That's true.
So, you know, putting a wide money is something that you may never get back is.
Yeah.
So, but I, I feel like we can start this year and check them as we go and make sure that they, you just file a lien on the properties that aren't paid this year. Does that work for everybody?
It works for us.
Alright, anybody out there have anything, sir?
I have two questions.
Okay.
The important one is where's the movie tomorrow night?
Okay.
Where, where's that?
Right over here at Vet Park, right where the stage is.
I don't, I don't worry, it's that, I'll find it, okay?
Yeah.
And the other question is, um, about the licensing parts, for game TVs? Cause I received my motorcycle endorsement about, about ten years ago in Ohio, the actual motorcycle endorsement. And you have to really jump through hoops to get the endorsement, cause then it will be killed. I'm wondering, how, is there any training required, or what's the requirements for the license?
You have to have a driver's license.
You, will be an endorsement like motorcycle?
No, it's a driver's license, it's formally legal.
The license plate they issue forward is not a solid, like the license plate, but you just regular operating license driver.
You have to be sixteen to, or you have to be a licensed driver to operate one.
And they have to be inspected. Everything has to be inspected, just like a car, when you take a car down there to get it inspected, make sure everything's working on it, has that.
They have to.
I don't think so, just when you get it.
Just to want to have some of the, pretty good.
I also said that there'd be some kind of federal training, cause like when I'm on my bike, people aren't on the phones in their cars, they don't see, I've ridden through more than one, Frank Garby would get killed. So there should be some training, I think, but I guess whatever that you guys decide.
Well, and, and it's based on state laws, that your state regulations of what they pay you, you know, that has to, the state actually puts those into effect, or the laws are, that you are required to do when you are passing something like that.
In Ohio, there's the motorcycle, uh, burgers course, it's really good. So the guy that ran was a retired, ran, and he was yelling at me, he's creating a violation, the license was, was too poor to.
And I think with it being required that you have to have a license, you would hope that, you know, that they have a license to drive it, just like they, I don't know if they have to do anything to get a license? Do they have to pass any of that?
You gotta have a regular driver's license.
A regular driver's license is what I think.
Yeah, I wish Drankford had taken care of this and not passed it down to everybody else.
That's it, that's true, they done statewide, well, I passed them, because, you know, still, you don't, people aren't going to Oklahoma from one county to the next, you know. I wanna go to Adair County, right, but they passed it over there, you know. Down in Big Rocks, I'm playing county down there, I don't play the kind of passes at all.
I don't know, I heard somebody else passed it the other day, I heard on the radio.
I mean, it's one of those things, in my opinion, we should have made the uniform statewide, state.
Sort of like, um, state.
They're not blessed, yeah, instead of passing it to every, every county you've ever seen.
And they get it, so they don't have to deal with it. You know, anything that comes up, some counties are gonna have to deal with it, not the state.
That's what I was saying, from the, put in the, you know, the traffic twenty miles, well.
How they know?
Yeah.
How they know how much.
Where, where'd you stop at? I don't think, uh, stop there, then that starts all over on the twenty miles.
You're gonna go twenty miles here and then twenty miles back.
Yeah.
Come on, ten miles here, ten miles back.
Jeff, do you have anything else? Chris, Debbie, P W. Okay.
Actually, I was kinda.
Motion, John.
I need a motion?
Exactly.
Executive, all favorably, I need a vote.